Hi, everybody. We'd like to welcome you, if we could, to the April meeting of the Springdale Planning Commission. If you would, before we get started, please join me in our pledge of allegiance and an invocation led by Dale Tyler. Thank you.
Ray Cardell.
Here.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Brent Couch.
Here.
Chris Hussain.
Here.
Jennifer Keith.
Here.
Teresa Reynolds.
Here.
Dale Tyler. We're going to have Patsy Christie kind of go through those items that are tabled, and then we'll need a motion in a second to approve the tabling of those items.
The rezoning request by Gary and Connie Eldridge is being tabled. They are -- the Elm Springs Apartments LLC is being tabled. That's a replat that -- no, that's a rezoning, I'm sorry. The rezoning amendment for the D.R. Horton, Northwest Arkansas LLC is being tabled. The Brentwood Village Phase Four preliminary plat is being tabled. The Springdale Senior Center of Large-Scale Development is tabled. The -- let me see if that's the last one. The waiver on the Harris Parking Lot Expansion has been tabled.
There's one additional one. The county line, square subdivision, preliminary plat.
All of those will be put on the agenda for the next Planning Commission meeting. First items on the agenda next time.
Thank you, Patsy. We need a motion in a second, if we could, to approve those tabled items.
Motion to approve.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Second by Howard Austin. Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, we are onto our tabled items from our last meeting. The first item on the agenda is on Taldo Properties, and this is on 40th Street, and it's presented tonight by Stephen Lyle. Stephen?
Thank you. I'm Steve Lyle from Lyle Religious Attorneys here in Springdale, here for Taldo Properties. Mr. Taldo talked to me about this project. I wasn't aware of it, and he said that he had a rezoning request that was compatible with land use plan and had support of the city planning department. I said, "Sure, I'll be happy to help you with that." And then I saw the video from the last time this came before you, and I got a little more nervous about it. And the truth is, no one wants to come into this room and feel like they have a very unpopular proposal for you. But this is a rezoning that is compatible with the land use plan that this body has come up with, and it does have support of your professional planners who have looked at things like traffic and compatibility. And on top of that, it -- no one is served by having a fallow piece of property. You know, before this, Mr. Taldo bought this property. It was a dilapidated house. I was talking to the city attorney last night about -- we were here for the Finest Committee meeting about, you know, the city was very close to condemning that house and tearing it down because of all the problems with it. And so now there's an opportunity, there's a great need in the city and all of Northwest Arkansas for townhomes. These are -- you know, one thing that kept getting used interchangeably in the meeting before, and keep in mind, the meeting that came before you last time was for a higher density zoning than what we have tonight. They've scaled it back to MF4. And -- but it kept being thrown around that these were apartments, and, you know, the density that goes -- these are not apartments. There are apartments within two-tenths of a mile from this property. If you look right there, you can see the Lynx Apartments that are -- that join the subdivision where a lot of folks oppose the townhomes down here in the much -- the one acre. You have high-density apartment buildings there. 40th Street is a collector's street. So what that means is, you know, you had, in the distant past, someone built one house on one and a half acres. That's not going to happen again on this property. No one is going to build their 3,000-square-foot dream house fronting 40th Street in its current condition. So where does that leave you? The options are -- and these -- the neighbors that are here have very nice homes, and they're on side streets that come off of 40th Street. And so they are not exposed to the traffic and the issues of what a collector's street brings, because there are commercial uses and high-density residential uses all the way up and down 40th Street. And it's changed very much from when most of these homes were built. And so what we have now is before you is just a very -- it's a compatible -- for a planning decision for the city, it's compatible and it's a useful -- it's a way to find a use for this property that benefits everyone. It benefits the people. Now, these homes that, you know, I looked back and, you know, a lot of these homes that are very nice homes, the people were able to buy a house in some of these neighborhoods that looked like the median probably in the '90s was about $100,000. These are $350,000, $400,000 homes now. Not everyone can go out and buy a -- that's a -- think about the exponential growth in the property values, and wages haven't kept up with that. So someone that's going to live in one of these townhomes is going to be paying more in rent than a lot of the people that live in the adjoining neighborhoods are paying for their mortgages because of that. So that just explains the need. I don't want -- you know, I don't think I can alleviate all the concerns of the property owners, and I don't dismiss those at all. But one thing I can assure you all, I look at a lot of appraisals. I've probably -- I looked at four today on different properties, and I -- and as some people know, I'm involved in a lot of cases against the city, because the city does do things and projects that devalue people's properties. Building townhomes near these properties, one thing I'm convinced of is that it will not devalue these homes. If you -- like I said, when the Lynx Apartments came in, they didn't devalue these homes. They've kept pace and appreciated along the double-digits appreciation that every other home in Northwest Arkansas has enjoyed, and that wasn't stopped by bringing in the Lynx Apartments. And if you look around downtown Springdale, the boom in the appreciation of houses downtown Springdale that used to be able to buy for $45,000 or $50,000 has to do with the addition of bringing people in to downtown. When you infill and you got some apartments and you got some people working downtown, all the single-family home values went up. And there's some really nice new townhomes that were built down around Park Avenue. That's not going to decrease the value of those properties. It's going to increase the value of the properties. I used to live in Harbor Meadows. There was some opposition to townhomes being built down there on Harbor Avenue by Mr. Taldo. It did not slow the property value increase. There were some townhomes that were built inside Harbor Meadows. The appreciation has continued at at least the same pace, if not higher. So that's one thing I'm sure of, is that the property value question, I think I can answer for you. Now, I can't tell everybody they're going to be happy to live next to townhomes when they're used to living next to single-family homes, but that's the reality. Now, right now, Mr. Taldo could probably build seven very small, without your approval, very small houses on that location. But I don't think that's a better solution for anybody. I don't think it's better for the neighbors. I don't think it's better for the city, and I don't think it's better for the marketplace. This is a good use, and it will allow people to take the green space, it was a dilapidated house, get some use out of it, and provide some affordable housing. That's really -- I know that you got to look at it last time as a higher-density zoning, and you weren't in favor of it. So I'd really like, now, if there are some of you who still feel like you're uncomfortable at the MF4, I'd really like to entertain any questions that you have to see if I can address that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Are there any staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for this property. This one-and-a-half-acre tract is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan as recommended for approval. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale, and allow an increase to medium or high-density use when land values prevent economical development of low-density. And we're only keeping this at a low-to-medium-density rate with an MF4, not what the MF12 was.
Thanks, Patsy. Thank you, Mr. Lyle, for your comments. Any members of the public that would like to address this issue? If so, please state your name and your address.
My name is Dale Strauss. I live on 4201 Clark Avenue. I don't believe there's a compatibility here with the surrounding neighborhoods. I work over at Harbor, and I drive from my house over to Harbor, and I go by a wonderful multitude of housing complexes, still having vacancies, lots of multifamily dwellings. And, you know, they're over there by the ballpark, and they plan to expand it. I don't see that immediate need, especially when I think about what is really wanted. It's homeownership. And I was thrilled to hear that Mr. Taldo might be considering maybe putting in a few smaller, maybe modest homes, and let people own a home, not just rent. We want people to come, stay, and fulfill a dream of ownership, not just renting. I don't feel like this space is really that compatible for townhouses in the middle of all these residents. So I just disagree with it, and I don't think the need is really there for this little stretch of this -- of our town.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you so much, especially those of you who came out and looked at the property. We really appreciate that. I'm Mary Miller, 4005 Clark Avenue, and I wanted to talk to you about maintaining the integrity of the established subdivision of Peaceful Valley. You've heard and read many reasons why large townhomes would not fit well in the allotted space, including lack of space, increased traffic in the area that is already congested, light and noise pollution. If spot zoning is allowed here, it will open the door to having it all over town, disruption of and change in the character of a long-settled community. Members of the community have been united and clear in their opposition to the plan. You may hear sooner or may have just heard about the need for affordable housing. There are three large multifamily townhouses and apartment complexes nearby, Hillcrest, The Trails at the Crossing, and The Bow, I believe it's called, all of which have vacancies. There are no new construction single-family homes in the area. Such buildings would be -- would fit well in the neighborhood and would be highly desirable. We would gladly have seven single-family homes on that space rather than large townhomes. It seems that the proposed development is in violation of the Planning Commission's mission. Regarding the Planning Commission mission, the project would negatively affect our prosperity in general welfare, provide undue overcrowding and congestion, alter the character of our neighborhood, and reduce our property values and economic stability. We ask that you support the interest of those of us who already live here and who will be directly affected by the proposed plan. Neighborhood compatibility is something that was mentioned earlier, and none of us in the community feel like this proposal is compatible with our neighborhood. Thank you, guys, so much.
Yes, sir.
Mike Nelson, 4104 Chapman Avenue. I spoke last time. There's a couple new folks here in this meeting, but my concern with this is we talked about the apartments up behind Lowe's, and again, the master plan. That's where apartments are supposed to be, to buffer the industry and commercial business to residential. It fits, okay? But going in right in the middle of residential and dropping multifamily in, that's where I sort of have a concern, okay? It was talked about, the one-and-a-half acres. Mr. Taldo bought that house in land and tore the house down. But then he also purchased land from the church to make it bigger to fit what he was wanting to do. We got rid of a house, now we're going to get, you know, townhomes. That's the concern of the entire neighborhood. It doesn't fit. We're not really here for how many units it takes. We're here for the best use of that one-and-a-half acres of property, okay? And we're all concerned with that's not the right use. We talk about Harbor Avenue, where he built a lot of homes, and he builds nice stuff, don't get me wrong. But those folks bought those homes with those townhomes being built or built. They didn't come in and put them in after an established neighborhood of residential property, okay? That's another concern that I have. You know, let's stay with the plan. The master plan is very clear, and like I spoke last time, we've done a really good job, Patsy and I. We talked back when I was on council years ago about how everything was just a good old boy system, and it was just everywhere, okay? And that's what I'm scared we're going to get into here. I've spoken with several builders that's waiting and looking at this, because the property that they can go out and buy right now doesn't have the utilities to it. It's easier to go buy these two-acre lots, four-acre lots, 10-acre lots, and drop this in, because they just have to tap into the utilities that's already there. It's cheaper for them, quicker return on their money, okay? So there's a lot behind the scene here when you vote. You're really not just voting on that acre and a half property. You're voting on all the vacant lots around the neighborhoods in Springdale. That's another concern of mine, okay? So I just ask that you really take a look at this and understand, a house was torn down, a residential house, and then property bought to change the scope of what's there. There was no multifamily there. The apartments behind Lowe's is perfect. That's fit your plan. That master plan was adopted by some very smart people before y'all. It was sent to the council for approval and got approved, and y'all have done a really, really good job staying with that. And that's all we ask, that you continue to do that. Don't come in and impact neighborhoods with inch -- one-and-a-half to two acres of property, you know? That affects everybody that's already put their money into these homes and stuff. So I don't know that I totally agree. Downtown is booming. Park Street, I'm not sure who put them in, but townhomes there, they look nice. But that was already in apartments and duplexes and things all up and down through there. So they didn't change the dynamic of the neighborhood, but this one here will, okay? You look at that, there's nothing around that except for single-family residential. So that's what I'm here tonight to ask you. Please take a very serious look at this. Don't just do it because the good old boy system's in place. Let's do the right thing. Y'all voted on this a few weeks ago. It wasn't the best use for that property. That's what I'd like to see you do again today, because I think you got it right. That's just my opinion, okay? So I appreciate every one of you being here and your time, and just look at it for me. That's one thing I would like to ask. Okay? Thank you, y'all.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any additional comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Bruce Lahey. I live at 4205 Clark Avenue. And if y'all would, if you'll just look at that map. I see single-family homes on that whole map, except that pink spot right there where you want to put townhouses. Imagine if they had an acre and a half in Southwind Terrace that was available, and they decided to put townhouses there. You would probably get the same response from the people that live on Clark and Chapman and Langford and Bonnie and Kendra. They're single-family homes. I can assure you, the first four homes on Clark Avenue that have visibility from the second story in a townhome into their backyard are going to be more difficult to move and sell when the time comes than when without those there. So just look at that, think of that. If we approve and authorize this, we're opening a big can of worms for the city of Springdale. When acreage becomes available, the next guy's going to buy it. And hey, I understand, being an entrepreneur, and Philip Taldo's done great things for the city of Springdale, but this is not one, and I just don't support it. And I'm going to ask one more time, those who do not support this, please stand up. We're supporting single-family homes and established neighborhoods to make sure that this doesn't happen, not just here, but throughout Springdale and the community that we live in. Thank you for understanding, listening, and I hope that we make the right decision.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Bill Miller. I moved in to Peaceful Valley, too, one year after it opened up. Been there 46 years. I love it. I don't want it to change. Just like he said, all those single-dwelling homes, I think that's what we need. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Reck, and I live at 4103 Chapman Avenue. This is my third time getting up in this room to show opposition to the rezoning of this property. I feel like whatever arguments I have that I make have already been spoken, either today, in January, or in December. You have heard about road congestion, light pollution for those living on Clark Street, the poor location for building, adding more to the load for teachers at Walker Elementary, and spot zoning. I feel like some council members' response has been that we neighbors need to suck it up, because it could be worse. But I don't understand why it has to be worse. Why can't it be better? This is a neighborhood, as we've heard, it's a neighborhood of single-family homes mostly. I don't know how many of you are familiar with 40th Street. You've heard that it's a feeder that connects Sunset and Don Tyson Parkway. From Sunset, it transitions from commercial to multifamily at the Lynx, to residential single-family homes and Walker Elementary School. As you head south, you encounter more single-family residences, agricultural areas, a working farm, a large recreational complex, and Helen Tyson Middle School. My children walk to those schools. It's a half-mile from our house to Walker Elementary and to Helen Tyson, and my children walk those streets to get to school some days. I know some of you are thinking that we oppose this rezoning because we are old, stuck in our ways, and dislike change. That may be part of it, but we also care about what happens in our neighborhood. We care about the people who move in. We want whatever housing is created on this lot to be as nice and enjoyable as the homes we enjoy. We can't conceive that anyone would enjoy being crammed into fourplexes like Sardine's, struggling to exit their parking lot through the one egress onto 40th Street near the intersections of Clark and Chapman. At the city council meeting, one of the members said that the developer's request was spot zoning. You know, I had to look that up, because I wasn't quite sure about that term. One of the definitions says, "Spot zoning is when comparable properties nearby are zoned differently, but the applicants are receiving favorable zoning classifications because they asked or because they are being favored." And Mr. Taldo, actually, has the right to ask, but when you look at the neighborhood and you look at the zones, it's single-family. And changing it to multifamily, I think, sense a precedence that -- and I think that's one of the fears that we as residents have. Maybe one acre and a half of fourplexes might not be that bad, but if you open up that window for that area to be multifamily zoning, there's more areas further down 40th Street that would be opened up to larger, higher-density living. I think Mr. Taldo saw an opportunity, but I don't think he understood the nature of the neighborhood he wanted to change. As we've been told repeatedly by various council members, it could be worse. That is what we're worried about. Sorry, I kind of jumped ahead on my talk. But this is a well-established community along 40th Street, made up of single-family homes. We are a neighborhood and a community. I know my neighbors. I am familiar with the people of my neighborhood. I may not know all their names, but I know their faces and their walking habits and their driving habits. My children walk along 40th Street to get to school. In spring, fall, and the occasional summer evening when it's cool enough, I can hear the sounds of the ballgame at the Tyson Complex. If this property is rezoned, it opens the floodgates for more development along 40th Street. There will be hundreds more cars zooming up and down the two lanes of 40th Street. There will be more light pollution from the parking lot lights from multiple complexes that could go into what is currently zoned for agriculture. My neighborhood will no longer be the quiet haven it was when I moved in and will become a metropolis filled with multi-story buildings, rushing cars, and cramped humans. For Mr. Taldo, this is just business. But for us, this is personal. Not only is Mr. Taldo threatening the future of our neighborhood, but when he forces these meetings, he takes me away from valuable time with my family. I'd much rather be spending my time cooking dinner for my family, attending my children's parent-teacher conferences, picking my child up from band practice. But instead, I feel the need to be in this room to voice my opposition to this rezoning. I feel like if I don't make a stand and you don't understand how our neighborhood feels about it, you'll go with Mr. Taldo's rezoning, because it makes sense to what you have on paper as city planning. But it's our neighborhood. We want Peaceful Valley to remain Peaceful Valley. What is the purpose of having rezoning specifications if you can zone wherever you want and to whatever you want? Why do you want us to settle for bad when you have the power to make it better? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience who might have something new and different to offer?
Let me see what I can do. I don't know. First of all, I just want to say a couple of things.
Your name and address.
I'm sorry. My name is Les Nelson. I live at 4004 Chapman. One of the things that was said, I just wanted to clarify a little bit, one of the things that's said that, you know, that 40th Street was a collector, actually, on the map, it's a minor collector. We have major collectors on the other ends. Again, that's obviously more suitable for what he's proposing. And as far as compatibility, I'm just like, seven small houses would be great. We can have a party, because that gives a lot of people some opportunity. And again, why is a townhouse -- for me, I have a trouble figuring out what's the difference between a townhouse and apartment. They both have multiple people living in the thing, and they both have this big, huge parking lot, which is part of our issue. If they had, you know, where they could drive in and park their own cars, they all had dedicated parking spaces, that would be a townhouse, to me. So that's what I think are there. But anyway, and again, one of the issues I have with the compatibility issue is you look at these nice places that he's got out over on Oriole and over on Harbor Avenue. on Harbor Avenue. They have pretty fronts and they face the street. That's a nice-looking deal. If we had, if he had that facing Fortieth Street, I'd have a harder time being ejected to it. I might have some issues. But turned sideways and shoved in that little hole, to me, is just not good for the city. It's not good for the look. It's not good for everybody. But anyway, uh, if you bear with me just a moment, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, a little bit about myself and my career. I've been always been someone who tried to protect, uh, do the right thing, advocate of justice and fair play. Three times in my, actually, four times in my career, my companies asked me to do something that was not illegal but unethical. And I turned in my resignation and they fixed the problem. The fourth time, the damage was done and I left. And because of the fact that we were living in a single-family home for nine years and we had built my, the cost of your, uh, house payment had gotten a lot smaller percentage, I was able to go back to school. If I'd have been in an apartment, wouldn't happen because that apartment rent would have gone right up with everything else. So I'm a very big advocate of purchable, purchasable, affordable homes. The average number of, uh, people in a household in Arkansas is two-point-five. Why do we need four-bedroom homes? But yet, some of the new homes that were, are being built in Springdale, I noticed the other day, are four-bedroom, twenty-seven-hundred-square-feet, three-car garage. Six hundred thousand dollars. The people that I'm worried about will never be able to afford that. Never. And I'm concerned about that. And then the other thing is, is that I feel like that the zoning situation, you know, I always thought, well, what did they do before zoning? Well, it turns out, if you go look it up, they had what they called nuisance laws. And so if you built something next to somebody that didn't like it, they took you to court. Well, that got pretty unworkable pretty quickly. And, uh, so that's when the zoning laws came in. And the zoning laws are good for planning, for worrying about traffic and, you know, again, the, the map itself does not show any work on that intersection right there where this is coming in. And it's already horrible. People on, uh, on, uh, Peaceful Valley are having to turn right to go left. So I feel like the zoning map thing gets a bad rap because of the fact that people have used it for the wrong reasons. And now that that has kind of got out, people are doing something else for the wrong reasons, which is building big, huge monster houses in gated communities that nobody can move into. That's the new way in which they're taking and abusing the system. So, um, and I guess I feel like the other thing that comes from fair play is, is I feel like when you buy something, you are guaranteed to get what you bought. Mr. Taldo bought that property with a house on it. Yes, it was in the process of being condemned, but nobody had ever been inside of it, that, that, all the kind of people who were condemning it. They just looked at the outside. So maybe it was flippable, uh, maybe it was workable. I, I will never know. But, uh, I just don't, uh, believe that the extra few units, like, say, seven to twelve, that extra five units is going to be, uh, worth as much as the damage we're doing to this community and the concerns around, uh, the children walking up and down the street, the traffic. And again, you know, one of the big things I think is important is put people where they live and play. We don't have any trails, and that's really popular for, for, for everybody's, the trail system. I can get to a trail system. That's where apartments want to be, that, right there where those people do that. We have no access to the trail system. They're going to be driving in and out for everything they do. Eat, go to work, and they're not in our school systems. If we put seven nice houses down through there, there will be school kids in there that will get a chance to, to work with our school systems. And our school systems are good. I have a grandson who can't get into Springdale Schools right now because there are no room. And so it would be really, really good if Springdale continues to grow and take care of that, to have some people in that area where they want to be. And I guess the last thing I wanted to say is that, uh, you know, what is the cost to these neighbors? Well, Mr. Taldo said, "Well, they can build a fence." Well, that's a cost to them if they choose to stay. If they choose to leave, you say, "Well, that's no big deal. They sell their house, they buy another." Well, there's three percent of their value just went right there. Mr. Lyle said that value doesn't drop, but that's hard to tell when the values are going up this way. It's hard to tell exactly whether or not there was a loss in value or not, uh, because the prices of housing are going this way all the time. I've been told that people would price them down, and I believe that. And if you're retired or you're over sixty-five, you change houses, your property tax just went up because you were, you were limited at that point. So at any rate, um, what I really wanted to say was, I've done all I can do. I had to do that, to look myself in the mirror and say, "Les, you did all you can do." I don't see why this is fair. I don't see why this is just, and no one has been able to explain that to me or try. So I've done all I can do. Now it's your, it's in your court, uh, to keep justice alive. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience who would like to add perhaps something that's new and different that we haven't heard yet? Anybody? If not, Mr. Lyle, is there anything quickly that we'd like to add before I flip this to, to the commission?
Yes, thank you. Just quickly, the, I think we kind of got the cart in front of the horse a little bit. We, we don't have a design, you know, that, we're, we're here for a compatible zoning request change. If, if there are going to be townhouses or anything else built on this property, it's going to have to go through a large-scale development. There's going to be design standards that kick in. We can't assume, you know, there's probably some screening requirements that are going to come in. There's lighting issues, all the parking issues, all of that will be addressed through the large-scale development process. So, um, I think there are a lot of assumptions made about, about what may or may not be on the property. And, um, you know, and a lot of the things about the lifestyle, and I appreciate that when, you know, when someone's lived in a house for a long time, they don't want to see anything change, and I understand that. And, and really, most, most of us would probably like to have a green space out our back door. But if you don't own the property, someone else has to, has to make that decision. And this is compatible with the design, and it doesn't, I, I think the, the concerns of a lot of these things are, are legitimate concerns that people are feeling, but, but they're, they're not things that you should expect from, from the relatively modest change in the density of this property. So that's all we're asking for, is for a zoning change today. If you approve that, uh, there'll be an opportunity to discuss design and large-scale development, design standards, and all those things to be addressed to minimize any impact on the people who live in those, you know, four or five houses behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. This will be a, a call for the vote, but before we do that, let's turn this to the commission. Any, any comments, any questions at all in any way?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mark Cloud.
Austin?
No.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
No.
Couch?
No.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
No.
Tyler?
Motion passes five-four.
The staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the twenty-third.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Next item on the agenda is B twenty-four oh five. This is on Sunset. This is, um, Iglesia Palabra Viva, Teresa Peralta, presented by Teresa Peralta. Teresa?
My name is Teresa Peralta. My English is not very good, but my son is translator for me. Soy pastor de un pequeño grupo de personas.
I'm a pastor of a small group of people. I'm a pastor to a small group of people.
Y estuvimos buscando un lugar, un local donde podernos mover y congregarnos ahí.
And we're looking for a place to, to, we can move and we can, uh, have services there.
Y encontramos este lugar que nos pareció adecuado para nuestras necesidades.
And we find this place that is pretty adequate for what we need.
Y este, que se adapta a las necesidades de nosotros en este momento.
And it adapts to the, uh, our necessities at this particular time.
Es un lugar donde es un centro comercial, una plaza.
It's, it's a commercial place.
Pero los planes que nosotros tenemos para nuestros servicios es, no influyen, no afectan en los horarios de los negocios alrededor.
But the plans that we have for, uh, for our services, they, they do not affect, uh, the, the businesses on that, uh, on that, uh, shopping center.
Tenemos planeado hacer servicios los viernes a las, después de las siete de la tarde. Los domingos a la una de la tarde, el domingo está cerrado los lugares alrededor.
Uh, we are planning to have services on Fridays, uh, at seven P.M., which everything is closed, and on Sundays at one P.M., which all the businesses around, uh, the shopping centers, they're, they're all closed.
Tenemos un espacio suficiente para el estacionamiento y, y, eh, lo que queremos es, eh, aportar algo útil a la comunidad como iglesia, uh, dar las buenas nuevas del evangelio, del, del evangelio Jesucristo, y de una forma ser útil a la comunidad.
Uh, there, there is enough, uh, parking spaces to accommodate the, what we, what we've been provided by the, uh, the fire department, the amount, the, the amount of people that we can have at the church. And, uh, one of the purposes of the church is, you know, uh, just be on some, some, some way a, uh, a provider for the community. You know, uh, we can provide a place, uh, for, uh, for people to gather and, and worship and, and share the, the, the good news of the, the word.
Y encontramos ese lugar que nos parece a nosotros adecuado para, para nuestro propósito porque es un lugar céntrico y es accesible a, a las personas.
And we find this place that, you know, that, again, you know, we think that is, is proper for what I do because it's, uh, kind of like in the center and it's, it's closer for, for everybody's convenience.
Y nuestro deseo es estar en orden con los requerimientos de la ciudad y por eso estamos aquí.
And, and we just want to be in order with the requirements of the city. That's why we are here today.
Thank you.
How many visitors do you think you would have on a Friday night and then visitors on a Sunday? Just approximately, what do you think?
Uh, this is the, the, cuantos visitantes está aproximado que podemos tener los, uh, los viernes, uh, y los domingos. En viernes es un grupo muy pequeño porque todo el mundo trabaja.
On a Friday, it's a really small group because everybody, everybody works. A number of, a number of...
Diez personas.
Maybe, maybe like ten people. You know, that's what, that's what we're estimating on Friday, ten, fifteen people.
Y en domingo esperamos que sean, somos veinte, veinticinco personas.
At this point, like on Sundays, we are a small group, it's between, I don't know, maybe twenty-five, thirty people tops, and that's including kids. But, you know, there always, always the projection of this is, you know...
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patchy?
The ingress and the egress to the, to the site is acceptable. The off-site parking requirements can be met as long as the hours of operation that are proposed will need to be observed. And to avoid parking issues, there has to be no parking on the grass. We have had in lots of cases where there's overparked all over everywhere, so those would have to be adhered to. The ref, the refuse collection is acceptable. The utilities are acceptable. There would be no additional screening requirements. Uh, I don't know what kind of sign they're putting up, maybe just on the building itself. The building was not designed for assembly use, and previous church tenants created numerous problems. We had noise complaints from the property owners, the people who live in the apartments to the east. We had property, we had complaints about trash and stuff in the parking lot. Our experience in having a church in this building has not been good up to this point. So I have to feel that the, the building is really not designed for this type of use. The parking issues in the past have raised questions, and the general compatibility and the proximity to the apartments to the east has created noise problems, and I just don't see that this is an acceptable place for this church to go into.
Are there any comments from members of the audience tonight on this issue? Hearing none to the commission. Any questions, any comments? If not, this is a call for the vote.
What is the, uh, timeframe, shortest timeframe of conditional use permit for we can hear, report how things are going?
Well, we don't have a provision in the ordinance that they can report on a conditional use. If we have complaints, we can set a hearing for it. We did that, this one on the church that was at this location before, and had to pull the conditional use because we had so many problems with it. Now, I know they're starting out small, but every church wants to grow, and that's, you know, for the first few months, it may be okay, but if the church grows any, sometimes we've had some real problems. This is, this building was not designed for an assembly use. That's the problem. It doesn't have the interior set up for that kind of stuff.
I'm assuming the capacity of the previous church was triple what they have now?
Well, the occupancy was set at a hundred and fifty-eight by the, by the police, the fire department on this one. I don't know what the occupancy was previously, but I don't know that it was so much overoccupied as much as the loud music, the not parking in the right places, the not staying with the times that are allowed, that kind of stuff. We had a similar one down the street at a location that we had the same kind of problems where they weren't, you know, it, it's hard to administer. It really is.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? This would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Brett.
Thank you. This is just a quick statement on the issue, I guess, because of the previous church. And I heard comments about the previous church right there. As a matter of fact, one of my coworkers, uh, apparently he is familiar with what was right there as a church. And I would say about the disorder that was at that particular time, it's got a lot to do with the, uh, culture, I would say. My understanding, it was a certain ethnicity that was renting the building before. And we are a completely different approach to this situation. Even with the parking spaces, uh, we talked to, uh, uh, the Samaritan store that is right across from where this building is at, and that was one of the, uh, uh, pretty much statements that they gave us right there about the disorder and the trash and stuff like that. We are committed to, you know, not to, not to go to that, to that same extent with that process. I mean, again, you know, we are a small, a small group, and if at any given point, we as considered, my mom as the pastor, uh, considered that, you know, we are like overflowing the place already. It, it's a sign that we need to move to, you know, to accommodate the, the, the church members.
Where are you holding services now?
We are, uh, renting, we're having like studies at this point. We are renting at The Rock. It's like farther down on Tony Town. They just, you know, allow us to use like a little hole that they have right there, and that's where we're holding services at this point.
How long is the conditional use?
Let's give it to that person at that location, and there's no time limit on it. But they can't relocate it to another location, nor can another church or come in there and just assume it till we, till we hear it again.
So could we set like a six-month conditional use so they can come back and, and we can review it in that time?
That becomes a legal question because we have never set one with a condition of the amount of time that you can be in there. with a condition of the amount of time that you can be in there.
I mean, that's effectively the answer. It's not really designed to be a regulatory mechanism.
Ten-four.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? If not, this is a call for the vote.
Cardiel. Cloud.
No.
Compton.
No.
Couch.
No.
Hussein.
No.
Keith.
No.
Reynolds.
No.
Tyler.
No.
Austin.
No.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's decision to the city council. You have to file your appeal within fifteen days in the city clerk's office. And then you will have to notify the adjacent property owners when the hearing data is set at the city council, okay?
All right, the last of the tabled items from a month ago. We've got Al Glover on Greenbrier wanting to change the front setback from thirty to twenty feet, presented by Bill Cochran.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for your time. This is a drawing that Al and I have club, excuse me. We've worked on this one quite a bit. This is an existing house, the carport that he would like to extend. Yes, those are the existing photos. About where you see the bottom picture on the bottom left would just be an open-air carport too. It would actually sort of match exactly what's going on in the house that he has right now. And the actual car, excuse me, the garage that he has now at this point in time is actually used for storage. So the intent was to actually stretch it out, gain another ten feet just so we can have a nice turning radius to actually get in and out of the area. It's really kind of straightforward. He just needs the extra space to be able to actually pull inside.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions or comments from the commission?
So is the intent that this new addition is in front of the current garage door?
Yeah.
And that he won't be pulling into the garage space at all?
No, I'll just be sitting outside in the open carport.
Ten-four.
Any comments from the audience? If not, this is a call for the vote to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mark Cloud.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
You still need to get a building permit.
Yes, well, that's usually what I do for him, so. Thank you, guys, for your time, appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, section six on the agenda, public hearing, these are rezonings. These all require a call for the vote. First up, twenty-four eleven, Leah Villantes and Walter Villatoro. And it's presented by Jonathan Bayona. Jonathan?
Hello, my name is Jonathan Bayona. What I'm presenting to you today is a rezoning from A1 to SF1 on that parcel right there in the corner. Right now, it is three point five acres. So the plan is to rezone to SF1 and split the south portion to one and a half acres and the north portion, two acres.
The comprehensive land use plan indicates slow density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size. The rezoning is acceptable, but in order to split this piece of property, you're going to have to do a subdivision because the property has already been split once or you'll have to get a waiver of subdivision regulations. Just rezoning it doesn't make it automatically where you can split it. If you were doing two two-acre lots, you could leave it as A1 as long as you had two hundred foot of frontage. But to rezone it to an SF2 allows you to do a lot, smaller lot sizes, but it still will have to go through the subdivision process, okay?
Yeah, yeah, it's only three point five acres, so we couldn't, you know, we couldn't work with that.
But even splitting it to lots, it will have to have a subdivision proposal because it's already been split. I think that property's been split, actually, two or three times over the last few years. So you need to come talk to us about how you get through that process to split it. It's not just as simple as filing a informal plat to create two lots, okay?
Thanks, Patsy. Any questions from members of the audience at all? Hearing none, this is a call for the vote from the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Chris, thank you.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Passes nine-zero, thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-third.
Thank you. Next up are twenty-four thirteen. This is a rezoned Club Car Wash up on Forty-Eighth. I want to go from a C2 to a C5, presented by Bates and Associates.
Jeff Bates with Bates and Associates, we're needing to rezone this so Scooter's Coffee can go there and they need a drive-through, so it has to be C5. And, yep.
Comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. It's recommended for approval, improve the city's economic base and tax structure, encourage the development of a wide range of commercial developments for residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience at all on this issue? Hearing none, this is a call for the vote to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Mark Cloud, call for the vote.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-third.
We've got a number of tabled items that are on your agenda. We'll have to skip over those and we drop down to plats and replats, final plats. Anything that we do here, this is related to our staff comments. So the first up there is replat twenty-four oh-three, the Hayes First Edition. And that's presented by Satterfield Land Surveyors.
Dana Rosa with Satterfield Land Surveyors here to answer any questions you have on the replat.
Patsy, are there staff comments here?
Planning has standard comments. And in addition to those, we need information on the location and description of all utility easements, street lines, and reservations. Locate or dedicate on north and west property boundaries where existing utilities are located. The sanitary sewer at center line, does it extend to four oh-one Belma? If so, on which lot, and please clarify on the replat.
Engineering comments. Minimum forty-eight foot of right-of-way is requested on Dodson Street. So this property would be responsible for dedication of twenty-four feet from the center line of the existing road. When I scaled this and measured it, I only got about twenty-one feet.
Any other staff comments at all? Any questions or comments from the audience? This should come to the commission, this would be a motion subject to all of our staff comments. And you're good with the staff comments?
Yes.
Okay, good. Any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Motion, subject to staff comments.
Thank you, Chris. Motion by Chris Hussein.
Second.
Second by Mark Cloud.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday night, the ordinance has to be in our office by tomorrow at noon.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
The next replat is twenty-four oh-four, this is Industrial Park Plaza on ESI Drive, and that's presented by ESI.
Thank you, Chair Compton, Brandon Rush with ESI. This is a proposed, basically, a property line adjustment. Happy to answer your questions.
Do we have any staff comments first and then maybe some questions? Ron?
Besides standard comments for planning, shared access easement to be dedicated via replat twenty-four oh-four is required. Also, identify or provide shared parking agreement for lot seven B for the ADA stall or identify new ADA stall for existing structure on lot seven A since you split some of your parking spots into the adjacent lot there.
Engineering had those same comments.
Any other staff comments at all? Any comments from the audience at all here? Brandon, you're good with the staff comments?
Yes, we'll provide that easement or...
All right, good. This comes to the commission as a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion, subject to staff comments.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Thanks, Brent, thank you.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Passes nine-zero, thanks.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday, the ordinance needs to be by tomorrow at noon.
ESI is presenting the next option as well. This is a little bit more complicated, twenty-four oh-five. We've got a Palmer Freeman addition, which would be a motion subject to staff comments. We'll do that first. We've got a variance request, two variances down there at the bottom, you can see that. And then also, we've got a large scale and we would handle that lastly. So, Brandon, you want to continue on?
Sure, we've got a few things happening on this project. I'll start with the replat. So this is actually undoing a replat from a few years ago to combine these two lots into one. Happy to answer any questions about that, same ownership.
Are there any staff comments here on this proposed replat of a replat?
Yes, planning has one comment in addition to standard comments. We'll just need the book and page number for vacated easements on this replat prior to recording.
You okay, Brandon, with that? Okay, good. Any comments from the audience on this replat? This would come to the commission then as a motion subject to the staff comments that have been made.
Motion.
Ray Cardiel, motion, we need a second.
Second.
Second. All right, we've got a motion and a second, thank you. Yes, correct.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Passes nine-zero, thank you.
That was the easy part.
Yep. We've got a couple of variances down at the bottom. Brandon, do you want to talk about those variances and maybe we can combine them and do them both together?
Sure, we have the owner here as well to speak to some of the particulars of these variance requests. The first one is a variance for the separation of drives. There's already two existing drives on this and there's some problems out there with neighbors and trucks utilizing this facility's drives and damaging their building and things like that. So we're wanting to alleviate that issue by moving this existing drive basically down here. And then that should fix this issue with trucks trespassing onto this property, we hope. And then there was a landscape variance. So the reasoning behind that is this proposal is for an automotive paint booth, basically, and pollen and leaf litter stuff disrupts that process. So we are providing, you know, away from the paint booth area as much as we thought we could, but we're asking for the variance.
Thank you. Any staff comments on these variance requests?
Or the large scale.
Or the large scale, I guess we could do them both.
Planning has a couple of comments in addition to the standard comments. Please include the screening fence details. We were only able to see the dumpster screening fence details on the typical detail sheet. A lighting plan is required for the entire site, displaying at least one-foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas. Ensure existing parking area has photometric details as less than one-foot candle is represented in pedestrian and parking areas, including what is directly adjacent to the existing parking area on site.
Brandon says he's okay with that.
On your landscaping variance, you are going to make up, you're going to meet what needs to be done landscaping as far as the total landscaping instead of just not in certain areas?
Yes, we, yeah, we have the same amount, just not on certain sides of the building and things like that.
Thanks, Dale. Any other questions from the audience at all? Any more staff comments in any way? All right, we've got the variances. This would be a call for the vote on these two variances if you're okay by doing them together.
Call for the vote.
For the two, Mark? Okay, for both variances, call for the vote by Mark.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Passes nine-zero, thank you. And the last part of this is the large scale, that's twenty-four thirteen. This would be a motion that would be subject to staff comments. Are there any comments at all from the staff on this particular issue at all? That's what I thought. Okay, it comes to the commission as a motion subject to the staff comments that have already been made.
So motion.
Mark Cloud, thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiel.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Thank you, passes nine-zero. Thanks, Brandon. Continuing with the large scale, we're over on page three of the agenda up at the top. This would be twenty-four oh-nine, L twenty-four oh-nine, the Black Forge Warehouse on Conneer Drive. And it's presented by, not by James Gertz, who's on your agenda, but by the owners. I'm not sure who they are or he is, or she is, I'm not sure who was here.
Jim, is the owner's with you?
They are both here, Mr. Putman and Mr. Cardwell, both the owners are both here present.
So you'll let Jim speak for you? Okay, we're good.
My name is James Key, I'm the architect on the project. Mr. Gertz's apologies, he could not attend here this evening. We've worked with staff over the preceding month to have preliminary meetings, discussions with all the various department representatives. And I think we've got all the various issues of accessibility worked out on this project. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
You should note, there are no variances on this large scale. Now, do we have staff comments beyond that?
No variances, but any staff comments?
Just one, in addition to standard comments, the lighting plan is currently under review.
I have one comment, it's more of a recommendation. Add wheel stops to the parking spaces that are adjacent to a sidewalk or increase that sidewalk width to seven feet, helps prevent vehicle overha... or increase that sidewalk width to seven feet, helps prevent vehicle overhang and making your sidewalks inaccessible.
Pardon me. We'll be glad to address that, I think the wheel stops would be preferable over the wider sidewalk.
Good, thank you. Any comments from the audience on this issue? Hearing none, this is a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Thank you Dale.
Second.
Second by Mark Cloud, this is 2409.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you. We skip over another one on there with the auto body expansion. We now come to the best title of the day, the big deal. This is presented by Phil Swope.
Hi. We have only one variance we're asking for and we've talked about it before in a work session about the parking situation. So happy to talk about that again, I know there's a few comments still remaining with planning and we've, typographically, we've fixed those, they're pretty minor, there's a couple more significant that we've already changed and I could hand out some revisions if we want to see that.
We did a staff comment, so we'll have those on the record.
Sure.
Okay. And also Phil did send something in today, I just did not get a chance to look at it to see if it did answer all of these. But on the cover page, please add the variance number for the variance requested. Need the name and address, or need address of owner added to the cover sheet. Need state plane coordinates for all fire hydrant locations. Show the total number of handicap spaces required. Handicap ramps and truncated domes will be required where sidewalks intersect with apron at both entrances. There was a loading space added and it was in a parking lot island, I did see that that had been moved, he did show me that before the meeting. Screening fences required in accordance with chapter 56, show trees associated with the screen, I did not see a fence that was called out on the plans. Frontage landscaping is required in accordance with chapter 56. And then there is a grammatical error in the landscaping notes that needs to be corrected for the irrigation system. Outdoor storage, trash collection and loading areas must be landscaped so that their functions are fully contained and out of view of the adjacent property and public right of way, outdoor storage is going to need landscaping. And that's it.
Thanks Ron.
Engineering comments, submit a floodplain development application, show undisturbed vegetative buffer along the creek, minimum 25 feet.
Thank you. You okay with all the comments that have come from the staff?
Yes, we're fine with all those, yep.
Any questions or comments from members of the audience? This would come to the commission as a motion subject to staff. Before we get there Phil, the one big, big with pickleball courts is noise. Have you got the insulation on the inside and the sound buffering inside this to take care of noise?
Oh yeah, oh yeah, that's, it's a, I mean, they're expecting this to be a wide regional draw, so that's, it's got to be, it's got to be the right way.
Okay, good. I never would have guessed that, but the plastic in the plastic, it's, the complaints about pickleball courts in proximity to homes are everywhere, so that's why I asked that question, I'm glad you've addressed it, thanks.
Yes, you bet.
Thanks.
They are requesting a reduction in the number of parking spaces from 350 to 225 and they gave a good explanation on how they came up with that number. They also have the capability to add some additional parking if this goes better than they expected and we need more parking.
Yeah, and I might mention, there's some additional property up front that ideally we'd use for some other developments or some add-on services that would really go well with what's being planned. But that's all in the works and so, there'd be the opportunity to add more parking if we find out that we just don't have enough. But as is even with the 225, we think that's only going to be used at major events, so. Four or five times a year is what we think.
It's very unusual, we have the capability of starting with less with enough room to add some more. And that does not happen very often.
Yeah, I will make the statement, one of the reasons I'm in favor of this variance is because of that, because we could add parking down the road if we needed to. So, just want to make that clear.
Thanks Mark. We do that variance first, we've got a call for the vote on the variance?
Call for the vote.
Thanks Mark.
Cloud?
Obviously yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll do the large scale and that is subject to the staff comments that have been made.
So motion.
Cloud makes the motion? Second by Howard Austin.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, 2416, this is a Harbor Surgery Center. If you looked at its location, it's really right out there in the middle of Harbor, for sure. This is out on Isaac Orchard Road, presented by ESI.
Thank you Dr. Compton, Brandon Rush with ESI. Just like the name says, it's a proposed 10,000 square foot surgery center. It's a little over one acre lot. We're not asking for any variances, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Should be noted that you can't get a variance in a pod, so.
Thank you.
Because you didn't ask for any.
Thank you.
Just killed your moment there, didn't she?
Sorry, this one is, they didn't have a choice.
Any staff comments here on this project?
Planning has one comment in addition to the standard comments, provide certified minutes of the ARC meeting. This is part of the conditions associated with the ARC approval.
Thank you. Katie?
Show proposed streetlight at the drive. And then is there an accessible path from the north parking lot, because it looked like there were only stairs to get up to this property?
There is only stairs from the north parking lot.
Can we add an accessible path?
Not easily with the grades that we have through there. We have accessible parking at the front of this facility. The north lot is kind of an overflow staff lot.
Okay, any additional comments at all from the audience? Again, this comes as a motion subject to our staff comments.
So motion.
Thank you Mark, we need a second?
Second.
Second by Ray Cardiel.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, thank you Brandon.
Thank you.
Next up, 2417, this is out at Shaw Park for baseball, for the complex and a parking addition, again presented by ESI.
Thank you Brandon Rush with ESI, this is for proposed ball fields and parking landscaping, lighting improvements associated with that. No variances, happy to answer any questions.
Any staff comments on this issue?
Planning just had standard comments.
Any comments from members of the audience on the...
Engineering has one comment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry Katie.
It's just a short one, update the paving plan to show the apron of the new drive as concrete.
Anything else Katie? Okay, sorry.
I have a question though.
Patty?
How did you come up with the number of parking spaces to be added, what did you use?
I think we just kind of tried to get as many as we possibly could in that south area.
Fair answer.
It's a fair answer, I know there's some controversy going on about parking at park facilities and so I'm just curious about, did we get as many as we could get, because when you start flipping games over, it creates a problem.
It's a very efficient parking layout for that area. We have got as many as we can get in that area.
Thanks Brandon. Are there any comments from the audience on this particular issue out at Shaw Park? Yes sir. If you could give us your name and your address?
Steve Wing, 7001 Somerset Place, cottages at the park. So cottages backs up right to the park there. We love the ball fields, we think this is going to be a great thing for the park. However, they are, the planting plan that you all did shows an extensive amount of planting along the road, but there is nothing for a noise, light or sound barrier at all between the entire line of the cottages and the ball fields going in. There is a berm there and we have a little bit of plants, but the majority of those plants have already died since the park's gone in place, so they're just twigs sticking up out of the ground. What we're asking and a lot of the, we did a survey of our homeowners there. They're all just requesting additional planting be done along the entire line. Again, for the noise pollution, we did have a concern regarding the parking, if that much parking is actually needed, it's a lot of parking. But we are asking that either a compound of trees or a line of trees go through. Hopefully something like Green Giant Arvitae that are going to provide year-round light, noise and sound barrier. The road names for the parks are switched, so you'll need to take a look at that. Not a big deal. There's also a berm that's up there and the ball fields are going to come right up next to the field, we're asking if we can go ahead and have that berm extended. Again, just to provide a little bit of a barrier between all of the stuff going on in the ball fields and the cottages right there, because we do back right up to those ball fields. And that's all we're asking, just an extension of the planting plan, provide the evergreen trees that are going to be up there, something that's going to provide us with light, noise, sound and a little bit of a barrier between the housing and the ball fields. Otherwise, great plan. Yeah, I guess that's it, then I talked about the parking, but yeah, there's a lot and it's going to be 12 and under ball fields, so, not too bad. And thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Brandon, was there any discussion at Parks and Rec about adding any additional screening along that side?
Not really, but it seems like a reasonable request that we could add some on that side.
Okay. And we need to look at what's, whatever's not lived, they need to have those replaced, I know that Ron's been working with them out there for the last couple of years trying to get some of that replaced. So I'll spend a little bit more time going in there and making sure we get all that stuff taken care of. Greg, do you have a comment?
Thank you.
He has that look.
Thank you Greg Taylor, I live at 2991 Willleben Circle in Springdale. Just a couple of comments, on the original, on the original drawing of the park, there was more, there was a soft trail drawn in on that east side and there was a lot more landscaping drawn in that was not actually put in. Just to refresh everybody's memory about that. Second thing is, I just looked at the plan for the first time while I go with Brandon and my question to him was, on the new extension to the east, there's just a ride-in and a ride-out on that entry, although there's a ride-in and a left on the other two. I'm just concerned that if people go that direction to go out, they won't be able to turn left. So I just kind of brought that to Brandon's attention to, it's always congested when you're turning over those and if people don't realize they can't turn left, then it's going to back up the traffic there, so I don't know if that can be considered or not, the other two have it, this, the new one just doesn't.
Brandon, were you aware that the other two had it and this one didn't?
Yes, I was aware, I hadn't really thought of it in that way until he brought that up, but I think that would probably be useful when lots of people are leaving at once to have two out and one in.
It can be a madhouse when they, when the games flip over, there's no doubt.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you look at the original layout for the park when it was designed and, and as Greg brought up, were these landscaping eliminated on purpose or is it just something on oversight, we didn't get it all in there?
I don't know the history on that. Why...
Okay, I think we probably need to go back and look at the original and see what, what it looked like and see if we could come up with something that kind of addresses those concerns that were brought up. Okay?
Yep, we can look at that.
Thanks Brandon. Greg?
I think what may have happened on that was when they decided not to go ahead and complete the ball fields, they just didn't, they just did the dirt work, but they didn't finish any of the other amenities around those ball fields.
I think that's true, because that was taken out of the first package and with this new bond program it's put back in, so we probably need to go back and look at that. Okay, you might visit with Chad and make sure that he knows and, you know, look at what are the changes between what was originally proposed and what we have now.
Thank you. Any more staff comments at all on this issue? If not, this comes to the commission as subject to staff comments.
Quick question, are we agreeing to do ins and outs at those locations?
I think we're going to look at it and, and visit, yeah, and visit with Parks and Rec and see if we could come up with some way to make that work better, yeah.
Tim Ford.
Yep.
So motion.
Thank you Mark, good question.
Second.
Thank you Dale Tyler for the second.
Hussein?
Yes.
Sir, did you want to address this issue?
My name is David Steiner, I live at 6979 Autumn Avenue and my house pretty well backs to the park. And before I bought there, I was told that the park, the ball fields were scrapped, they were not going to go in. And I'm quite concerned with the noise, particularly if they put in lights and night games and that. Had I known this, I would have never bought that lot. And it's just somewhat aggravating, now that it's too late, it'll certainly depreciate the property value of my house. And it's called cottages at the park, had the subdivision been called cottages at the baseball development, I don't think anybody would have ever bought there. I certainly wouldn't have.
Well, I can to tell you, the original master plan for this park had ball fields at that, in that location, it's always been part of the master plan. It was taken out of the first bond program because there wasn't enough to build those in there. It was the intention to put them in, in a future bond issue and now we're to that future bond issue. When cottages at the park was developed, that was part of what was going on. It was, didn't know when it was going to happen, but it's always been part of the master plan for the park.
I was misled, then I was told that it was scrapped and there were not going to be any ball fields.
It was scrapped at the time, that's true. But the voters of Springdale approved another bond program, which put more money into parks, which allowed us to go back and take this. And that's what's being proposed now.
Okay, well, it was a quiet subdivision, but I'm afraid it won't be any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've got a, we've got a motion and a second.
So Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Apartment development on 56, this is L 2418, it's presented by ESI.
Thank you Brandon Rush with ESI, I'll try to stagger my future submittals. This is a 16 acre property, we're proposing 192 units. No variances, happy to answer any questions.
Any staff comments here on this apartment complex, First Star Apartments?
Besides standard comments, need to submit the $500 review fee. Screening fences required in accordance with chapter 56, show trees associated with the screen. Will there be a fence on the north side? And I believe the response was a retaining wall is proposed in that area. I may have got that in the wrong spot, so we may need to look at that. Perimeter landscaping is required in accordance with chapter 56, perimeter landscaping is incomplete around the proposed Phase 2. Without a variance, it will need to be built to stand alone if Phase 2 is... Without a variance, it will need to be built to stand alone if Phase 2 is not built. Need to show dumpster location. One dumpster location needs landscaping on the north side of it. Lighting plan is required, displaying at least one-foot candle in all parking and pedestrian areas. One-foot candle average for the entire complex may have been met, but we have many safety concerns for areas that are highlighted, following slides, that do not get close to the one-foot candle average. Several areas to bring your average up are 2.5 to 5.2-foot candles in limited areas. When there are larger areas that are still well below that, would need to be considered a safe, need to be considered to make it a safe situation by SEPTED standards. Several parking areas are deficient, along with a few pedestrian areas that still do not have lighting. On the site layout, check measurements of buildings. My measurements show that you do not meet some of that with the parallel buildings. Crosswalks in some of the pictures that are shown that I can send you need to be of a differentiating material such as stamped concrete. All facades must be a minimum of 50% recommended materials, with the balance being one or more acceptable materials. I didn't see the percentages on that. If you could, please provide that. Again, pedestrian walkway lighting still needed in a few areas, and also states that building-mounted lighting shall not be permitted to eliminate parking lot areas, and I think that's part of what's being done here.
Thank you, Ron. Any additional comments? Katie?
Submit a PDF of the signed and sealed drainage report.
Good. This would come to the commission as a motion subject to all the staff comments.
Before we do that, I have a brief comment on the lighting. Unfortunately for you, former lighting designer, so just looking at this, one of the things that I would like to see on these submittals, I think you can do it, I think you have, either you or others have, is include max-to-men ratios and average-to-men ratios. That lets us know how evenly lit the site lighting is. I'd request, or would like to see, 10 to 1 max-to-men and 5 to 1 average-to-men. That would go along with the average wood for the kettle for the whole site. Those are just things that IESNA recommends for site lighting, good even site lighting, and it's easily achievable. I did it for 25 years, so it's not like rocket science. But other than that, it looks like a good project.
Thank you, Mark. This has come to the commission as a motion subject to the staff comments. I'm sorry. Any comments from the audience on this development? I'm sorry. Thank you. We'd need a motion and a second.
So motion.
Ray Cardiel with the motion.
Second.
Brent with second. Thank you.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, 9-0.
Thank you.
All right. 2419, this is on Emma, Via Emma Revision, and it's presented by Ferdinand Fori.
Good evening. I'm Ferdinand Fori. This project was previously submitted and approved, and we have had to since gone back and change one of the buildings along water. And so we're submitting the whole large-scale, but three of the buildings are still the same as what was previously approved. The project is, you know, four and three-story buildings and 134 units.
Thank you. Do we have any staff comments on this issue?
Planning has only standard comments for this.
Thanks. Any additional comments? Katie?
There's a repair that's going to be needed to the sidewalk on Emma, and we would like the stamped concrete replaced with bricks, and then the landscape islands between parallel parking and the right-of-way need to be planted. A few of them, I didn't see had landscaping in them.
Thank you. You're good with those comments?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any comments from the audience on this project downtown? Hearing none. This comes to the commission as a motion that would be subject to the staff comments.
So motion.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Thank you, Brent.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Passes 9-0. Thanks. Large-scale 2420, this is out on the east side. This is Piney Ridge, and this is Phase 2, presented by Phil Lewis Engineering. Phil?
Good evening. My name's Garrett Rich with Phil Lewis Engineering. We're requesting large-scale approval, no variances. With that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions I can regarding the project.
Thank you. Any comments from the staff?
Planning just has standard comments.
Thanks, Ron.
Just need to submit a signed and sealed PDF of the drainage report.
Any audience comments on this, on Piney Ridge? No? It would come to the staff, again, as a motion that is subject to the staff comments.
So motion.
Mark motions. We need a second. Second by Ray Cardiel.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Passes 9-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Page 4 on the agenda for you, these are, this is a public hearing, a Form-Based Code, something we are trying to do in our downtown area, the Holcombe Arts District. Kind of interesting to hear about it by Prism Design, so Jenny Berbridge, Jenny, you want to talk about this a little bit? I went to the site today. It's a real interesting site for it to happen.
I'm glad you were able to drive by, because that is our hardship, the site itself and location, and it's a true infill lot. So yeah, this is a proposed three-story mixed-use building. The first floor, first story will include 2,000 square feet of commercial restaurant space, and then there's one residential use kind of tucked, or one residential unit kind of tucked on the rear of the first floor, and then the second two floors are purely residential. And so we do have three deviations we're requesting today. Can go through those one by one. The first one is the build-to line, and the site plan might be the best one to look at for that. That's one. There was one that's zoomed out just a little bit. Maybe we can still get that first one. And so the build-to, as it is right now in the code, is a minimum of 10 and a maximum of 25. And so that's the build-to zone where the building would be placed. What we're requesting is a variance of up to seven feet, meaning that we would be placed up to three feet away from the property line, and that alignment is driven from the building to the north of this, which might have been included in your original package. There's an existing historical church that kind of sets the street frontage line, and so we're trying to be consistent with that. And then likewise, across the street is the Lisa Academy, which also is built almost right up to the property line. And so that's the first deviation request. And I don't want to be discuss them one by one, or you want me to run through all three?
I'm going to run that first.
Sure.
The Form-Based Code is set up so that it allows us to do that. So we kind of mirror what's in the neighborhood itself by providing deviations like this so it can happen. We don't want it to stick out above, before, behind, or in front of the others. We want it kind of line up down the street.
It's kind of the start of that commercial corridor. To the south, you still kind of have some of the older historical homes that have been converted into commercial uses, but they still have more of the suburban residential form, so. See, the second deviation request is, it's the build-to line, but I'd like to, easier way to think of it is the building frontage percentage. So there's a requirement for how, a percentage of the, you know, if it's 100-foot property line, you have to have 85% building coverage. So the building has to be 85 feet wide. And so we have a constraint. If you go back to the site plan real quick, our hardship is that the property line is in the middle of a shared access drive, so we physically can't meet that 85% frontage requirement. As you can see, if it's green space, we're covering that with the building, so we are maximizing as much as possible, just keeping our footings on our own property. But the closest we can get to that percentage is 80%. So we're asking for a deviation from 5% from 85 to 80%. And that's along Holcombe. That's the primary frontage requirement. I don't know if we want to talk about that any further from planning. And then the third one is also within the Form-Based Code, and it's related to physical access points in the building. And we're doing a commercial block building type, and in that building type, there's a few items listed under access, and one of those items is if you have residential units, they want your access from the primary facade, the primary street. So ideally, you would have like a lobby, and you could come in, and then you go up to your residential units. We're requesting a deviation for that. We're trying to maximize that commercial space, because it is such a small lot. So we have a proposed rear entry for the residents above, and then that one unit in the corner. And again, it's really trying to just give a little bit of privacy. Our parking is in the rear. This is the rear access as well. And then the commercial space has two street frontage access points along Holcombe.
Which would allow it to be split into two if it needed to, or two access points for a single occupant.
Correct. Yeah, those are our three deviations, very specific things, so I'm happy to talk more in detail on any of those, but that's kind of oversight and overview.
Thanks, Jenny. Do we have any comments from the staff on this issue?
I think we've worked this one all the way around. More times than once, actually, right?
Any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Brad Fortenberry, 23647 Wrigley Black Top Road on AG Holdings. Just want to put my full support behind this. I found a community in Springdale that was walkable, that has given me more than I've taken from Ed by a long shot, and this, in my opinion, is a step in the right direction.
Thanks for the comments. Any other comments? No staff comments? This would be a motion, subject to the staff comments. We didn't have any, but this would be a motion for the Form-Based.
So motion.
Thank you, Mark. Second by Ray Cardiel.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Last section on the agenda, these are all variances, Board of Adjustment. The first one we have is from Yolanda Ambres Medina, presented by Letsy Ambres Medina out on Garnet Road.
Hello. So I think we're just here because on the house, we're trying to get a setback reduction from 20 to 10 in the backyard. Ed, do you have any comments on this one?
As you're aware, on Garnet Street, we had a complaint, and that brought in, Tom went out to look at not this house, but the house two doors over, and so now it's just kind of grown down, grown down the street. The building's not in the, they're going to have to get a permit, but the building is not in the utility, as best I can tell.
They didn't have a permit for what they built. We can get one if it's necessary.
They will have to get one once it's, they get their variance, if they get it.
Steve, I know the fire department doesn't support those kind of reductions. You don't have to comment if you're good. We know that the fire department doesn't support those kind of reductions.
Any other staff comments? Hearing none. Any comments from members of the audience on this issue? If not, this is a call for the vote issue. Any questions or comments from members of the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. By Brent. Thank you, Brent.
Cardiel? Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, 9-0.
You need to go get a building permit, so you need to meet with the building inspector right away.
Okay, do, I can call tomorrow then, right?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, guys.
Q. B 2425, this is Alice Carter on Mays Avenue, wants to increase the fence height from three foot to eight foot in a couple different locations. It's presented by Alice Carter. Alice?
Just want to increase it for privacy.
You want to increase it from the front edge of your house all the way around the back, from a six-foot fence to an eight-foot fence? And those fences that come into the front, you want those to be eight-foot as well?
Well, I've already checked on prices, so eight fences out of the deal. Six-foot would be good.
For the ones in the front or the entire thing?
The entire thing, six-foot all the way around.
Okay, you have an existing six-foot fence.
No, I have a chain link. We want to put in a privacy fence.
Well, if you're putting in a privacy fence, you can put a six-foot privacy fence in.
All the way out to the front.
The front has to be no taller than three feet. So you would need a variance on the front to go from six to three in the front.
That's what I want, then. I want the six-foot in the front, if I could have it. Because there's clearance enough for you to get out.
Well, you'd have to put it behind the site triangle, so, because we can't, we can't put it in the front so where it blocks the vision of people pulling in or backing in and out of your driveway.
It won't. We've already tried it. It doesn't block your site.
We have a method that someone will have to come out there and measure it for you and show you how far you can put it, because there is a set distance that you have to have for a front setback as far as it can come out. And it looks like you have utilities in the front, and so we probably need to get those taken care of, too.
I guess I don't understand.
There's utilities in the front, along the front. There's a power line, I see.
Well, the fence won't come out to there. It's only coming out 25 feet, on one side and 30 feet on the other. It comes past the tree.
Okay.
It's 30 feet from the corner of the house. It's 30 feet from the corner of the house on one side and 25 feet on the other side where the utility pole is. It won't even be near that.
You're amending your variance request to say you want the front fence to go from three foot to six foot with the drawing that you have here, and you're putting six-foot privacy fence in the back, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You were just asking for 30-foot, but you're not bringing it around the front, right? You're just doing two sides. You're not actually completing the fence across the front of your yard.
No, it'll stop at 30 feet out, and you'll have 20 feet to back out of the driveway.
Understood. Thanks.
One suggestion, usually when we look at fences like this in the front yard that could be a site issue, there's an option to kind of step it down so that when it gets to the front, it is at that three feet. It could be an option.
In looking at the area today, there were no other fencing options that looked like the one you're proposing. You're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's for privacy.
Correct. But I'm just letting you know that there are no other homes within a three-block area that look at all like what you're proposing. And I understand you're looking for privacy, but I just thought I'd mention that to you.
It will be neat and clean.
Will it be a wooden fence, like Woodby's?
Hmm?
Will it be a wood fence?
Wood fence.
Any questions at all from the audience, members that are here? Comments? This would be a call for the vote, or any additional questions or comments from the commissioners. If not, it's a call for the vote.
Patsy, is this uncommon? Have we had anything like this before?
We have had a few instances where we've put six-foot fences in the front, down each side. We don't do it a lot, but we have had a few.
So this is, if we vote, if this is approved, I'm assuming we'll do the site triangle as well to verify that, how far they can go and how tall it can be, correct?
We'll send somebody out there to verify the distances, so we know that it's not going to create any problems, yes.
Good, thanks. Call for the vote.
Thank you, Mark. Call for the vote.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would suggest you stake it, how far out you're going to put it on each side, and call the office, and we'll have somebody come look at it for you.
Okay.
So we don't have any issues, okay?
Good. Thank you.
I just want you guys to bear with me, because my English is not so perfect, and I'm reading off my phone. Is that fine? Because I had to. My name is Maronda Palencia, and I'm here on behalf of my dad, Manuel Palencia, the owner of the house. We are building an extra garage in the backyard for the cars measuring 32 by 40. We weren't aware of having to have a permit for it, which we apologize, and would like to know what we can do in order to get one.
Are you placing this so far back on the lot because there's a septic system? You have a septic tank between the house and that area, so you're staying off the septic system? Is that why it's so far back?
Yes. And the picture looks messy, but yeah.
Ed, do you have any comments?
Well, I don't know if anybody surveyed this, and I'm not sure if that six feet is going to be enough. You'll see from the pictures, it's pretty close to what looks to be a barbed wire fence, which is really not a very accurate line for that. It's a very big building for the side, it is. And also, if you'll go back to the other picture, and I'll let Steve talk more about that, you'll see there's an existing barn that's been there since 1994, and it's not very far away. So we start to put a lot of big buildings that, you know, together in the back of a lot, it's not usually a good thing from a fire standpoint, but I'll let Steve talk about it more if he wants to.
In addition to just standard opposition from setbacks, we just need to verify that it's at least five feet, just due to the state fire code. Also, you know, the fire department is opposed to anything within the standard setbacks. So the first step would be to determine where the actual, the line is, and then from there would probably be, if it's not within the five feet, it would be non-combustible exterior cladding if it passes the framing inspection from the building department.
Do you have a survey of the property? Have you had it surveyed in the corners, Mark, so we know we have the right dimension on the side?
I don't quite understand.
Excuse me? So the six feet was verified by me. However, like Ed said, with the barbed wire fence on the back, that's a little questionable, but the six feet on both sides was verified by staff.
Okay, only to the fence. We don't know if that's a property line or not.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we need.
We probably need to table this and see if we can get a survey of that property and actually determine where it is in relation to the property lines because of the size of the building.
What is the building used for, again?
Garage.
For cars, multiple cars? Yeah, it's really big.
Yeah, it's like a.
Really big.
And we can't, at this, when you bought the property, did you get a survey of the property? Do you know?
No, I don't.
You need to check and see if you have a survey. So I would suggest.
We actually have, we have a survey from a previous informal plat that we might be able to check in the office and might give us a little more information.
Okay, the question is, are we going to be able to find the corners out there to see where it is? See if that get, so my recommendation would be that we table this until we can verify that information, but you can't do any more work on it. It's got to stop.
Okay.
Until we get this worked on.
Okay.
Okay?
So what does that mean?
Sir, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
So what she means by that, just we'll hold off for now?
My name's Gary Blevins, and I'm living in the back, and according to the chief building inspector, the county overhangs, if you count the overhangs, are encroaching on both sides, the side and mine. That's the comment I've got.
All right, thank you.
That's why we need to get a survey and see if we can get this thing verified where it actually is and go from there. So what you need to do is come into the office in the next couple of days, and we'll give you some direction on the way we need to go to see if we can figure this out.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Hi, good evening. I'm Roosevelt. So the homeowner is wanting to expand that driveway towards the door for the, because there's limited parking, and that's a very heavy traffic area. So the existing driveway does not hold enough parking for this household.
So that driveway has already been extended to the other side?
No, it's existing right now. We just want to extend it to the south side.
So are you taking the mailbox out?
Yes.
Are you asking for a curb cut, too?
Yes, that was included in the permit, yeah.
Well, I think you're getting an awfully wide driveway cut here. Does this house have a garage?
Yes, it does.
What's it being used for?
One-car garage.
What's it being used for?
To store stuff.
Has anybody calculated to see if it would meet the extend?
Concrete versus grass.
Yeah, would it exceed the 40%? Has anybody calculated that?
It meets the requirements, other than moving towards the front door.
Okay. Wouldn't exceed the 40%, is what you're saying?
Okay.
Okay, but it's too, it's coming closer to the front door.
And there's several, just to add, there's several homes in that same street that have the same layout. The house in the front goes, their driveway goes all the way to the door. So this one will stay away from the door, at least 12 feet, I think.
Any comments from members of the audience? Any staff comments at all? This has come to the commission as a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Mark Cloud, call for the vote.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Passes unanimously, 9-0.
You need to get with the engineering department to get a driveway permit, because you got to extend the driveway, too. Okay?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We've got Perfection Dog Spa. We've got two issues there, 2431 and 2432 on your agenda. This is out on Old Missouri Road, presented by Gavin Smith, and maybe we can take these variances together once we hear exactly what they are. Gavin?
My name's Jason Young. I'm with Gavin Smith Civil Engineering, representing the applicant. It's no problem. These are three variances we're requesting for a non-large-scale development. It is on a .207-acre parcel on Old Missouri Road. First variance we're requesting is for a driveway separation variance from the requirement for driveway separation. There is a driveway to the north of us that is nine feet off of the property, off of the shared property line, because the frontage of the lot's only 75 feet, and RDOT is going to require us to put their entrance in, which is 40 feet wide. There's physically no way to access this property as improved without the granting of this variance. Second variance that we were told we needed to ask for was for perimeter landscaping, and that's simply due to an easement on the north and the west side of the property. We won't be able to plant any large trees. What we are proposing is part of the non-large scale are small shrubs, or tall enough shrubs to provide screening, but not to conflict with any existing utilities or proposed utilities in those easements. The third easement, the third variance that I actually found, I actually had to speak with staff myself about it, because I had to make sure that we needed to request this, is a requirement for 60% of the parking to be in between the building, not a maximum of 60% between the building and the street. This lot is so small, I tried every single variation to try to make it work. There's no room to even put a parking lot on the site if the spaces were facing north and south, to route the parking behind the building. I think I came up with two available spaces after you added in the drive aisle. So these three variances would help us continue on in the non-large scale and support a small business in Springdale. It's up and coming, and thank you.
Any comments at all from members of the audience? Any staff comments?
We've worked through this one quite a bit. I think they've done the best they can.
Yeah.
It's a small lot that used to have a house on it, that the front yard got taken off when the road was widened, and it's kind of got a unique situation with all that. I think we've gone through everything, and I think we've got it all worked out with these variances.
This comes to the commission then as a call for the vote. We can do these three variances together, if that's okay with you?
Let's do that. Yes.
All right. Mark, do all three together?
Yes.
You okay with that?
Call for the vote.
Okay. Mark, call for the vote, and all three together.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiell.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Last item on the agenda, before we get to the Planning Director's Report. This would be W 2404. This would be the Moore Hangar on South Missouri Road, presented by Dennis Moore. Last person on the agenda.
Never fails. Yeah, there we go. The, what I'm asking for is to not build a sidewalk on the hangar that I'm building on on Missouri Road. And currently what you've got, this is, the first picture on the left is looking south on the airport property that the city owns towards 412. And then the other picture to the right is looking north past the two new hangars that the city's built. And then flip to the next picture, yeah, right there. That's the one north towards the rodeo grounds that the city owns all the way to Emma Street. And then the other one is just kind of towards come and go, and kind of some, really some background information. There's a total of about 7,180 linear foot of street frontage there around the corner. City owns almost 5,000 feet of that, and, which is 69%. And there's no sidewalks on any of the city-owned property. And the private owners along that way have 8% hit or miss sidewalks down through there. Going south, go back to the first picture, if you would, please. One more back, right there. If a, if the city were to come inclined to try to put a sidewalk in right there, there's going to have to be extensive drains, because that drains all the way down to 412, and the slope is such that you can't even walk on it at the present time. So what I'd like to do is to not spend the money on a sidewalk that I've been there for a year and a half, and I've never seen anybody walk on that side of the street. If they were to get there, they'd have to cross, when they got to this point, they'd have to cross four lanes of traffic to get anywhere close to a sidewalk on the other side to get down to 412. And there's been two hangars built since I started mine, and neither one of those has a sidewalk, and there's a proposed renovation going on that's not requiring a sidewalk. So I just want to opt out and not have one also.
One comment. This is a state highway, so 265 is a state highway.
Yeah.
And it's really in need of widening if we're, it's going to have to have something done to it in the future. When that happens is when we really need to get all the sidewalks put together at that time, because it is a state highway.
The state highway, I had to get a drainage deal from them, and they weren't too excited about giving me a sidewalk permit anyway.
No, they're not excited about that yet, but we are in discussions with them about getting this section, 265 widened.
So, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Any staff comments on this issue at all? Any audience comments?
Katie's got one.
Engineering, we recommend payment in lieu of improvements.
Again, this is a recommendation to council. Council has to make the actual waiver. You can't waive it yourself. You can recommend to grant the waiver or whatever, and the council makes the final decision.
I'll motion to, or recommend, motion to make a recommendation, the recommendation to the council to waive the sidewalk.
Okay. We've got a motion from Dale. That would need a second. Second by Howard Austin.
No.
Keith.
No.
Reynolds.
No.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cardiell.
Yes.
Cloud.
No.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
No.
One, two, three, four, five.
Staff will prepare the resolution, goes to council on the 23rd, with a recommendation to waive.
It's on the 23rd?
On the 23rd, yes.
Thank you. That's all the items that we have on the agenda. Flip it over to our Planning Director's Report. Patsy, if you have one?
You notice on tonight's agenda, there's a lot of things that's been tabled. We are working really hard to get things only to you all when most of the issues have been addressed. This designing things at the table is not good for any of us, and so we're kind of taking a pretty hard hand on the things that you get here. Now, I can tell you, if we've gone through it a couple of times and nobody listens, they'll be on the agenda for you to, for I'll explain it to you at the table why they're still here, okay? The work session we have scheduled will be the 16th at 5:00. One of the things we needed to discuss is the master street plan changes for local